I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting, Monday, July 1st, 2013. Please join Councilmember Loretano in the Pledge of Allegiance and please stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I ask that you join the mayor and council in a moment of silence and bow your heads for the nineteen firefighters who were lost last night in the Yarnell Dear Lord, as we approach our country's birthday this Fourth of July, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to live in a country where we are free, where we may speak freely, where we may worship freely, and we may live in peace. We ask your blessing for those who have given their lives protecting us abroad to protect our freedom here at home. We ask you also for a special blessing for all those in the military at home and abroad and their families, and a special blessing for the families of those nineteen souls that have joined you at the gates of heaven. We hope that they will heal and we share our prayers in their healing. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Loretano. This evening, we have two communications, and I'm going to start out. Our first one is to recognize if Carol Rota would come forth, please. It's for organizing and facilitating the May 18th, 2013 Armed Forces Day in Pebble Creek. And I'm going to tell you others, other times that you also organize this, and I'm going to come down and join you. You're just too great to get roasted. I wouldn't do that to you. Besides, you're smaller than me. I'd never get away with it. Been wanting to do this for a long, long time. We all have just great feelings for you, for what so much you've done at this parade in Pebble Creek and on Armed Forces Plaza. So, this is a letter of recognition from the council and the mayor. So, Mrs. Carol Rota, Chairman of the Armed Forces Plaza Committee and a resident of the city of Goodyear, gives credit to her fellow committee members and volunteers for their assistance in making Pebble Creek Veteran Day and Armed Forces Day celebration great successes over the past four years. And oh, wow, they have been. And they have grown. Mrs. Rota's commitment to this worthy cause has distinguished her as a leader in the West Valley. Her tireless efforts to ensure that our veterans and active-duty military members receive the proper thank you. They deserve for their unwavering defense of our nation's freedoms and ideals. Mrs. Rota and the Armed Forces Plaza Committee's important work reinforces the city of Goodyear's appreciation, support, and admiration for veterans, military members, and their families. Mrs. Rota has demonstrated the qualities of character and excellence, the excellence that are truly respected and admired by the Goodyear community. For these reasons, the mayor, council, on behalf of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, recognizes your achievement to be valuable examples of community pride of honoring, and we just can't thank you enough. You have done so much for our community. Going to give you a hug, and then I want you to talk to people a little bit, okay? Thank you, Georgia. I actually think Georgia doesn't want to get into a rumple seat this year in the parade. You know, I had a bunch of things that I wanted to say up here. I want to recognize my go-to people for the parade from Pebble Creek because I'm not the only one out there putting together these hundreds of marches. All my fellow residents, I thank them, and I share this acknowledgement with them. My husband, I want to recognize him. He's every now and then says, "Oh, you still live here. How nice." And this year, last year, I should say, I grabbed my granddaughter and her mom to be in the parade, and I know Megan's only thirteen, so she loves to be embarrassed by her grandmother. When I came here ten years ago from New York, I don't know if you've recognized it behind my Louisiana accent here. I lived there for fifty-six years, and that was home. So, moving out west here, I had to create a new home, and in order to do that, I needed to get involved. So, I started out, actually, with the West Valley Arts Council, and I volunteered to do the Diamond Ball. In the first year, I was, it was the Chicago theme. Cheryl, and you remember that, I think. And I was a newsboy doing the silent auction, and being, you know, from New York, I went, "Hey, Louis the Lip, you want to come see this? I got it for sale, right in the number, any number." And then the following year was Pirates of the Caribbean, and they asked me if I would do it again. And the only reason they asked me, they wanted to see what I would dress up as, so I came as a pirate. What else? I had even a parrot on my shoulder. Then I moved on to the ballpark, and I aggravated Mark Kimball over there, who's become a very good friend. I helped usher there. I also love Halloween. That's my favorite holiday. So, I volunteered one year to be Zelda the Fortuneteller, and I was so good at that that they asked me to do it when the library was opened up. And I told fortunes with maids, old maid cards. So, if the girls got the old maid cards, they were going to hire an old maid. If the boys got an old maid card, they would just marry the old maid. And Halloween was a very special time for us. We grew, and our family got all together, and we had big blowups. We had haunted houses, and for a number of years, we used to dress up. And again, I was Wendy the Wacky Witch. So, you can tell where my sense of humor goes. And then, you know, for my own community of Pebble Creek, I made a proposal of, you know, I wanted to feel at home, and I just still wasn't feeling it. And the thing was, I was missing a parade because where I lived, we had an old-fashioned parade on Memorial Day. Being so warm here, Memorial Day, nobody would come to it, so I decided Veterans' Day would be better. And I made up a proposal, gave it to the HOA, thinking they'll never go for it. Instead, they said, "Here, run with it." And I left there, and I went, "All right, now what the heck do I do? What do I do?" So, I happened to know somebody really close. She was the vice mayor at the time, and I called her up, and I said, "Georgia, how do I do a parade?" And she gave me the name of someone, and here we are, the fourth year later, doing our parade dedicated to POW and MIA's. And I am finally home. This is home to me. So, this acknowledgement and recommendation by the council means a great deal to me. But in the light of what has happened in the past few days, it's really small potatoes, considering what those volunteers did. I'm happy I can make people smile and make people laugh, and I can make the country a little prouder again and see the veterans standing there in their uniforms and marching as well as they can, or riding in a convertible, or the police department comes out, the fire department, and everybody just has a good time. And I think it brings back a lot of memories of when we were kids and watching the kids on the side. When little boy said, first year of the parade, when I asked him, "How did you like the parade?" He says, "This was so great." I says, "And how many parades did you see?" He says, "Only one." But it is great. The outpour from the city is excellent. The businesses come around, and everybody just gets into the mood of having an old-fashioned parade. So, I extend the invitation. It's Monday, November 11th, 2013. It starts at Tuscany Falls in Pebble Creek and runs right through to the Pebble Eagles' Nest side, and it accumulates at the Armed Forces Plaza. And last year, we had an American eagle, and this year, the American eagle is coming back. So, if you want to see a pretty nice thing, it's Aurora, the American eagle. Don't call her a boy because she ruffles her feathers. But I thank you again, and council, I thank you all very much. Could we have the other people that are in the audience who are on committees that help with this parade come on up, and let's take one big picture? Come on. Come on, come on, come on. Don't all of you rush to the, leave the mayor standing out here with the microphone in her hand. Come on. Bill, come on. We're going to have a picture taken. Don't be shy. Yeah, come on.
Short people in the front.
I think we're going to have to kind of come back in here. So, I'll back up here and put the short people in front. No, you're not short. You don't qualify for that. Whoop, here comes some, here comes.
Poor John. It's okay.
Are we ready? All right, look forward. No, no, you're all right, you're all right.
Matt, can you get everyone, because I'd like, and I'd like a copy so I can put this in the Pebble Creek post.
All right, one, two, three. Okay, let's do one more. One, two. Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, our second item for communication is a 2013 legislative session wrap-up by John Casellas, intergovernmental programs coordinator. John, we're anxious for this one, so.
Well, good evening, mayor and members of council. Tonight, I'm going to give you a legislative wrap-up. However, it won't be comprehensive. Tonight, I'll focus mainly on the TPT bill. We will be following up later on, as we have in past years, with a wrap-up that is detailed. We're waiting. That should be out this week, which will basically document all the bills that actually became laws. We're still waiting on that. The websites that we get our information from, particularly at the end of session, don't really keep up with all the amendments and changes, so we kind of wait for this update to come out that's comprehensive. So, once we get that, which should be this week, we will pass that along. Also, one other item is that September 13th is the day that all the laws passed will take effect unless otherwise noted in the bills. So, this September 13th will be that day when those laws take effect. This is just a brief summary of the session. Basically, it gives you the total number of days, 151. Of course, it's supposed to be a hundred-day session. We seem to miss that by a little bit. The bill's posted, 11:58. That's basically all the bills that were brought forward to the different chambers. That's about average, I'd say, for any session. And then, the vice mayor and council member Stip were kind enough to point out that the bills passed do not add up in terms of the bills signed and the bills vetoed. So, in the interim, I made a phone call and found out that the bill's vetoed number is 26, and the bill's signed number is 256. And again, these are updated on a regular basis, but I got this information directly from Romino Canonicio. That's capital K, H, no, okay.
Yeah, we could have her stand, yes.
But in any case, the bill's vetoed is 26, and the bill's signed is 256, and that adds up to 282.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Well, you can see how stute on the budget that our council is, so they, yeah, they do add well.
Although, I don't know if Larry's real happy right now, since those two numbers didn't add up, and my return is imminent. He may not be really thrilled at this point, but. And then, if you'll recall that during this session, the governor actually called a special session. You recall there was some issues with the budget, so she called a special session. It lasted three days. There were ten bills passed and ten bills signed. All of those were budget-related bills. And I know you guys are quite aware of our legislative delegation, but I figured I would present this for the folks in the audience and people at home. The city of Goodyear has two legislative districts, District Four, District 13. We have a senator in each district and two representatives in each district. So, for District Four, we have Senator Lynn Pancrazee, and we have Representatives Lisa Otondo and Juan Carlos Escamilla. In District 13, we have Senator Don Shooter and Representative Darren Mitchell and Representative Steve Montenegro. If you recall, at the early part of the session, we had a dinner. The city manager was there, and members of council were there. And I have to tell you that it was a great event. I think those who were in attendance would agree. But it really paid dividends down the road because when I showed up down there at the legislature as kind of a new face, I was really, you know, warmly greeted. They already knew who I was. So, you know, those kinds of events really helped us in the long run, as did a lot of your participation throughout the session. But I think it really set a tone and made it a much more personal session for us in regard to our delegation. So, for those of you who did attend that, I mean, it really did pay off in the long So, again, this evening, I'm going to focus mostly on the transactional and privilege tax. Obviously, that was the bill that had the greatest potential harm for our city. In the way I've set the presentation up, it basically is going to show you where we began the discussion and where we ended it. The first point to be made has to do with the construction sales tax. If you recall, early on, the proposal basically meant we would lose all our construction sales tax, or pretty much all our construction sales tax. That's where we started off the session. Where we ended up was that we ended up retaining almost all of our construction sales tax, with the exception of what they call trades activities, which essentially address small construction projects, which would basically be small companies going to a homeowner's home and doing what they call modifications or repairs, something of that nature. So, any of the large developments that would be multi-home construction would not be in this category. It's really more geared towards small businesses doing home repair-type activity.
I don't know what your next, what's, what you're going to next, but would you explain to the people what we use that construction sales tax for?
Sure. Construction sales tax is essentially one-time money, one-time revenue. In large part, that money goes toward doing capital projects, and it also can be used for some of our, what we call our rotation plans, or we've used some, I think, for some of the IT equipment, and also, I think, somewhat on vehicle rotation. So, it's more of a one-time revenue source.
But it's, growth pays for itself.
Yes.
That's basically the statement behind it, that when companies want to come in or building, big building projects, we don't go out and tax our residents for that. We tax the people that are building it because they, because of growth. So, I just want that.
Absolutely. Yeah, and really, it becomes an economic development tool for us in many regards, and this is kind of the point we made. And I think that point came through loud and clear because we weren't alone. All the cities and towns really came out, stuck together, and really pushed this issue, and it wasn't an easy one. This one went right down to the wire, so it was pretty tense. Second point, aside from the construction sales tax, obviously, was a big issue, we also had the other side of the reform, which had to do with essentially compliance with the Market Fairness Act. And in a word, simplification was what the federal government was looking for in terms of compliance. So, throughout most of the session, actually, we had a series of discussions regarding auditing, remittance, and also licensing. And so, when we started the session, ADR would not have been required to have an IDA or an auditing, IGA with cities and towns.
Public what ADR stands for, please, in the IGA?
It's the Arizona Department of Revenue. And so, there would have been no ability for cities to request audits. Where we ended up is we will have an IGA, the details of which have not been written. However, one of the provisions that was discussed is that cities and towns will have the opportunity to request an audit, although still, there's no enforcement provision on that, but we can ask DOR that we be allowed to conduct the audit. Another point, again, on that same issue, ADR would require cities and towns to pay them for use of their auditors and would not allow cities to perform any audits. This is where we started. Where we ended was that cities and towns would continue to perform local audits on single proprietors within their own boundaries. And again, we can make requests of ADR that they allow cities to perform audits for them. So, if ADR finds itself that they don't have the personnel to keep up with the requests from cities and towns regarding the amount of audits that are being requested, then ADR can remain the lead agency on that audit, but then they can also allow cities to actually perform the audit. And again, cities had the strategic goal, what we did as a city, to do collection. As you're aware, we are not a self-collecting city. The state actually collects our sales tax for us. However, we did have, I believe it was in the Strategic Action Plan, that we do go to self-collection at some point in the future. Obviously, under these provisions, that will no longer be possible. And again, ADR would have been allowed to continue to use current state sales tax remittance form or a paper submission, as they call it. Again, this wouldn't have directly affected us because we didn't collect our own. It may have down the road. But now, as a result of the efforts down there, they will require, they being these cities, can require the state to, cities can use their own form. So, the state form, which is much simpler than some of the larger self-collecting cities, they now will have to create a form that gets the same level of information that the self-collecting cities get now. And what was interesting in the negotiations was the legislators were not getting the kind of information they needed in order to kind of look at the construction sales tax. So, I found it very ironic that while we couldn't supply them with that information because ADR doesn't supply us with that information, the self-collecting cities and towns actually had the information. So, at the same time, they were looking for it, and we couldn't provide it. We had someone who could. They were looking to actually simplify that form, which would meant those cities that actually had information at that level of detail now would not have had it either. So, fortunately, I think this was a very good end result, and so, anyone submitting a non-electronic, non-portal return will have a paper return that's much more detailed than would have been the case otherwise.
That's called, like we've been discussing, documentation?
Yes, so. And then, there were things that didn't change. Obviously, movement to use of online digital portal. That was something that, actually, there was legislation in the previous session that had already put that forward as a provision. Obviously, it's more efficient. And again, as you say, in this day and age, everything is moving in a direction of being electronic. That continues. That was one of the goals that, you know, we were pushing in the beginning anyway, so that stayed the same. And then, of course, the state is now solely responsible for audit of online remote sellers. Again, this was a big point with the Market Fairness Act, the main focus of which was how do we accommodate the sales that occur online? And so, that really was one of the main impetus behind this whole project.
So, the advantage to private business owner is?
Well, the advantage right now is that bricks and mortar is now on the same page as someone purchasing online because both will at least share in the tax burden.
So, it should help those businesses?
Should help bricks and mortar, certainly. So, I believe that is it. I certainly would be willing to answer any questions.
Any questions? Oh, I just want to compliment you. It was a real fight, and I want the audience to know that many council people, many mayors, we were down at the legislature. I think one day, we, what, saw seven of them all total or something like that?
Yeah, we were down there all day.
So, we fought for this. We fought for the rights of the city to be able to support themselves, and so, it was a collaboration and cooperation of all the cities and all the intergoves, and so, it really was, you can make a difference, and I'm going to encourage the council next year to come with us. I know sometimes they say mayors are the only one, but it isn't. The number, it's great, and we'll make sure you know the issues, and we'll protect our cities. Yes, Joanne?
I just want to say thank you, John. I know that you did a lot of footwork this year, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the dinner that we had with our representatives. I think that made a big difference, and I think they understood finally our side, and they listened to the cities that they represent, so I really do appreciate that.
That's a repeat, and we'll do that again, to build those relationships, and it makes it easier for everybody.
And it has a lot of value because you're in a very relaxed, more personal, you're building those relationships. So, again, I thank all of you because throughout the session, you guys have been very, very heavily involved, and the league really was asking for that. And it's nice, as a representative of the city, to go down there and have my council and my mayor participate so heavily and, you know, to have them know that we're down there and supportive, and so, it means a lot. It does.
So, good job, John, and also to Romina. Don't want to leave her out in this because, you know, she...
Despite those wrong numbers that she...
Yeah, absolutely. She's always in on this. So, again, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the briefing. Now, it's a time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item. And I have these. Are these non-agenda items?
Yes, mayor.
I think Bill's switching the, okay, 75, all right. So, let's call on the first one. The non-agenda item is Australia Lights, and Bill Zednik, please come forward. And Bill, you need, thank you for coming forward. You need to repeat your name and address for me, please.
Certainly. Bill Zednik, 1-8227, San Alberta Drive.
Thank you. And before you start, I don't remember seeing you before me before, so I want you to know what we can do, okay? So, we can listen to your comments, of course.
Thank you.
And we can respond to any really severe criticism. We can request that staff investigate and report on the matter. We can request the matter be scheduled on future agenda. We cannot have a discussion with you. So, each speaker is limited to three minutes. As you know, the yellow light and buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin, you have to identify yourself, which you did so graciously. Thank you. So, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to just make a couple comments regarding the light poles from your work session. What resonated most in my mind after hearing the discussion was the word "no documentation." As many of you have some experience with the military, there's a document for everything. And without having documentation, we're merely guessing at what's going on, and that's very difficult, then, to come to any kind of conclusion. Also, there was a lot of perhaps misunderstanding in terminology between EJC and HOAs. I spoke with David briefly about that, and I would suggest strongly that council takes a very hard look at what the differences are between those two entities. Some are HOAs, and some are not HOAs, and those need to be clearly defined. Also, out of all the things that happened, we have Newland involved, we have the EJC, which is really Newland-driven, we have two HOAs, then Newland has two, I'm sorry, three members on the board of five, two are elected residents, and we have many other sub-vendors, so to speak, management company, landscaper, such. But the HOA, our residents of Australia, they're also residents and voting members of Goodyear. And that's the problem that I think we've missed, is that they're also residents of Goodyear, and even though they have some concerns, I think that we really need to do a little bit more due diligence in looking into the different aspects of who should be signing what, is that MOU a legal document or not? Should that be thrown out, or should that be revised? I think that that stuff needs to be defined, and I would respectfully ask council to... And I would respectfully ask council to spend a little time and do some due diligence on that. Don't necessarily go to people who are going to give you the answer you want, but go to those residents that are voting people here, that are subject to the $200,000 for these light poles. And even though the city may gain a little bit or lose a little bit here, those are still people that are very near and dear to that $200,000. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. All right, the next one is Nancy McPhelan, and that will be on the retention basin. Ms. McPhelan?
My name is Nancy McPhelan. I'm a resident of Australia Mountain Ranch. Yes, I am going to talk on the retention basin, but I did want to make council aware, and Brian actually has a copy. This is the CFD brochure that we were given when I moved in in 2005. And it does stipulate that this information has been prepared by Newland Communities, the developer of Australia Mountain Ranch, in conjunction with the City of Goodyear. To answer some questions about the Community Facilities District, its benefits to the homeowners and how it operates at Australia Mountain Ranch, not all of us were given this. I guess I was the lucky one, but a lot of our concerns here are based on this brochure. Brian does have a copy of it, and I hope he'll share that with you. I feel like I'm doing things in reverse tonight because you were going to have a work session and we were going to talk about the retention basin.
I apologize for that, but unfortunately...
So I feel like I'm rebutting what I don't know what you're going to say. So I just want to get my call in. I'm going to rebut it. I'm concerned with the lack of information that was provided to you with the city light discussion. I am concerned that you don't have the appropriate documentation on the retention basins. And since we still have a little bit of time here, if you could please pull my public request and read what was given to me, I think you'll have a better understanding of this moving forward. And I can give you my copies to make it quicker, and they can make copies of it if you'd like to do that at this point in time. And I'd also like to request that, since we only get three minutes here to speak to council, and we really couldn't participate in the work session, I would like to request that council have a special meeting with the Australia residents to discuss the issues that we're having. I don't know if it's ever been done, but think about it. No?
No, I'm not, I'm not giving you an answer.
You're looking like...
I'm listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city manager noted. Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to go on to the consent agenda. Are you ready? Okay. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda? Items 6.1 to 6.5 by title only, please.
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting held on June 10, 2013. Item 6.2, approve a request from Andrea Lukowicz, agent applicant representing SWH Mimi's Cafe LLC for a new Series 12 liquor license, number 12079515, for Mimi's Cafe located at 1220 North Dyce Art Road, generally located on Dyce Art Road north of I-10. Item 6.3, approve a request from Andrea Lukowicz, agent applicant representing 1188 North Dyce Art Road LLC for a new Series 11 liquor license, number 11077031, for Holiday Inn and Suites located at 1188 North Dyce Art Road, generally located on Dyce Art Road north of I-10. Item 6.4, approve a request from Andrea Lukowicz, agent applicant representing 1188 North Dyce Art Road LLC for a new Series 12 liquor license, 12079521, for Cutting Edge Bar and Grill located in the Holiday Inn and Suites at 1188 North Dyce Art Road, generally located on Dyce Art Road north of I-10. Item 6.5, adopt Resolution 13-1557, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Department of Public Health to provide strategic national stockpile assets, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Could I please have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Is that who said it? All right, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the business. So we'll go to 7.1, city policy updates. We will now consider approving city policy updates. Lyman Lockett, Human Resources Director, will present, and this is the first time of his presentation, so we'll try to be very kind on you. But welcome, welcome.
Mayor, council, I appreciate that. I'm here before you this evening to present a series of recommended policy amendments to our Policy and Administrative Guidelines Manual. These changes are associated with the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with our Public Safety Sworn Employee Organizations, as well as changes to our compensation plans and our performance management system. First, the first recommendation is by advice of council from the city attorney's office, and it provides for the ability to modify the applicable policies when the Public Safety Sworn Organization Memorandum of Understanding are adopted by council. Secondly, and I'll hit the highlights on these, many of these changes are consistent throughout policy. So again, I'll hit the highlights and spend as much time as you'd like on the others. With regard to Policy 100, we have inserted the financial feasibility language as it relates to the movement of the salary structure due to periodic compensation market surveys. We have also removed references to step and merit increases to adhere to the new non-sworn pay structure, which we changed to open ranges earlier. Policy 200, in Policy 200, we've changed "successful" to "meets expectation," again, to be consistent with our new performance appraisal system. And again, we've also removed references to step and merit increases to be consistent with our new compensation plans. Again, continuing on with Policy 200, we are recommending changing the longevity pay program to start at eight years. We have also changed the third shift differential recommendation, moving it from 65 cents an hour to a dollar an hour. Policy 400, changes have been made, again, to be consistent with our performance appraisal system, removing references to step and merit pay. And lastly, we have a change with regard to Policy 600, reflecting the change made on the fire MOU on the payout of sick leave upon termination. These changes are reflected in the documents that you have, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Would anybody from the audience like to speak on this subject? Thank you. Will the city clerk please read the Resolution 13-1556 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 13-1556, declaring as a public record those certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled Policy 1, Employee Policy Administration; Policy 100, Position Classification; Policy 200, Employee Compensation; Policy 400, Performance Appraisal; and Policy 600, Attendance and Leave.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by...
Second.
By Councilman Osborn. Open for council discussion. Council, Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Just my understanding, these are just cleaning up actions council has already done, has already approved, and codifying it in our policies. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilman Pizzillo. These are changes that have already been approved through the MOU and codifying those in policy.
Great, thank you.
One comment.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Councilman Osborn?
This may be my own thought, okay? But in the section on adjustments to salary, the way that's worded really isn't that crucial. I mean, it's been changed from "successful" to "meets expectations," but the words "or above" have been struck. And I guess, to me, meeting expectation is one thing, but I still think there should always be the "or above." I just still believe that that still gives that a higher expectation. So unless there was a reason why, you know, the thought behind that, I still think you should always say "or above."
Councilman Osborne, Councilmember Osborne, these changes are reflective of the new rating scale that we have in our performance appraisal. There is an element that we'll be bringing forth to recognize exceptional performance, so that "above" will be addressed in that regard.
True, and I do realize that. If that's where you feel that that's the reason it was taken out, just reading through it, it just struck me that it should have stayed. So that's just my own personal feeling about it, and just wanted to say it. Thank you.
Okay, any other comment? Councilman Stip?
You know, I'm going to take the opposite approach to that, Councilmember Osborne, simply because I think we're trying to change some culture issues, that by removing that possibility of a third step, as we used to have...
Yeah.
This is a good way of doing that, and then bringing the other issue back later.
So you feel then that what we're going to be doing in the future here satisfies that?
Yeah, I really do. And I'm certainly not speaking on behalf of any of the existing employees, but I certainly understand the culture. And I think we're trying to achieve a culture shift here, and this is probably a good way to do it with a few less words.
Well, and I guess I wasn't thinking of it that way. I was thinking of it more of just a culture of, we always want to do better. That was my thought process.
I'm with you, but I think they got it covered.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
I do think within the guidelines, though, it makes one know they have to go beyond in order to make that. So I think that's very clear in the performance measures. And if you remember, this all came about because we did not believe in the percentage, they said, that was well above. And we all said, "What?"
Yeah.
You remember that? And so out of that came this process. So I think the process is going to take care of that, and I think the numbers will be more realistic. That's my view, and we'll have to see in the end, so... Okay, so are we all done here? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, so let's go on. Will the city clerk please read Ordinance 13-1284 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance 13-1284, amending Policy 1, Employee Policy Administration; Policy 100, Position Classification; Policy 200, Employee Compensation; Policy 400, Performance Appraisal; and Policy 600, Attendance and Leave, as an amendment to the City of Goodyear Policy and Administrative Guidelines Manual of 02012004.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, well, let's go on to information. Comments from council, things you've attended, things you liked. Who would like to speak first? We'll start down there with Councilman Stip.
We, several of us, attended the National League of Cities' summer policy, I want to call it conference, because that's not really what it was, but the summer policy discussion, where we started the framework, at least on the Public Safety and Crime Prevention Committee, started the framework for establishing upcoming policy direction that we'll use for the league in the upcoming year. Very interesting, it was, they've also, the National League of Cities has also embarked on a strategic planning process. It was very interesting to see how similar our process was to the National League, which was very encouraging, that we've, you know, really done a very good job and really used a strong model for our strategic planning. So it should be a very interesting, interesting year. We heard, at least in our committee, we heard from somebody from the state of Michigan talking about economic conditions in their, in their state. And at one point, the state of Michigan's unemployment rate was 25%, and the city of Detroit's was 35%. Just absolutely unimaginable economic condition. So the fact that we've been able to be as strong as we are, come through the recession the way that we did, and all of us having a positive outlook on it, which I can't say was shared by the other council members from, throughout the country. They were kind of coming out from being in the dark for the last five or six years, and you could tell they just, you know, they were shell-shocked, and we've, we had a different outlook. So it was, it was very interesting.
Very good. Councilman Loretano?
Well, there were two things. First of all, I attended the Wise Board Meeting, and at the next meeting or whenever she's available, they're going to honor Councilmember Joanne Osborne for all of her work. So that's, that's very nice, and I think that's a great honor, because she's done so much great work with the kids there. I'm also on the Crime and Policy, Public Safety Subcommittee as well. And one of the big issues that I thought also came out of it was we're in a pretty good spot to come out of the recession overall. We just look like we're going to be poised out here in the West, in the Valley. Overall, Arizona is real, with housing and everything, we are going to start moving up, and I think a lot quicker than a lot of people think. So I think that's a very positive note. Other cities with the recession have seen significant increases in crime where we have not, so we have to thank our police department for that, because we do not live in a bubble. We live in a huge valley where crime does not stop at the city lines, and we do have to thank our police department for that. And we also talked a lot about what areas we want the federal government involved in these issues and what areas we don't want the federal government involved. We want to make sure, and I think that's something that our, Romina and her staff does very well at all levels as well, to try to keep the cities, I want to say, separate from some of those issues and our power away from the federal.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Got the pleasure to, I guess, visit with the ribbon cutting for the new Australia Healthcare Facility in Australia. Nice, great facility. Was with the mayor and Councilwoman Holman. And you guys are getting a great facility down there in Australia.
Is this it? Councilman Campbell?
I was just waiting. I was going to let Bill and Sherry go first, since they're on the same committee. Of course, we all went to, well, four of us went to Washington DC for the National League of Cities, and I serve on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And it was very interesting to hear about the high-speed broadband that is going out into the urban areas and how that is being tied in with the transportation issue. We also had several briefings on Amtrak and the reauthorization to fund Amtrak. And I didn't realize that Amtrak is only funded for a year at a time. And so they have to go back before Congress every year to get their budgets funded. And also, we had a wonderful discussion on moving freight from Southern California through the Southwest into past the Phoenix area. But all of those freight trains go right through our city of Mobile, which is in our city. And we're forming a little subcommittee to talk about some of the freight issues and how we make, and I don't know that we're going to be able to help it or expand it to actually Goodyear proper, but I'm on another subcommittee, so I'm interested in hearing about that when we go to Seattle. And last but not least, I wanted to tell you that every time we go to these national conventions or conferences, we're so proud to represent Goodyear because we have such a wonderful, wonderful city. And it's almost embarrassing that we sit there and listen to everyone else's crime statistics, the loss of jobs, the closing of Shopping Centers Act, and people actually moving away. Some of the larger cities are losing hundreds of thousands of people. They're having to move away because they don't have jobs, and they're losing their homes. And we're kind of like the light on these committees when we talk about Goodyear and we tell them what a wonderful community we have and how proud we are of our low crime rate and our wonderful, it's just a wonderful place to live. rate, and our wonderful, it's just a wonderful place to live, and I'm very proud to represent it.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. First of all, I, you know, I appreciate the moment of silence that we had for the Wildline Firemen, and people who know me know that that's, I have a son who does that. And so it's a very, it's a very tragic, it's a very emotional situation, and my heart just goes for those parents and those, and the families. It really is. I want to give props to Carrick Felix. He is a graduate of Millennium High School, who actually was part of the group that brought Goodyear as being an all-American city, and he was, by the MBA, taken on with the Cleveland Cavaliers, so one of our, one of our own guys. It's very exciting. I wanted to thank Skyway Church. Every year, they give us a great patriotic service, and they pray for our city, and they pray for us, and they pray for the leaders of our city, and that's always a highlight. The committees I am on with the National League of Cities, Youth Education and Families, and I'm on the Human Development Steering Committee, and a couple of things that we had, as they call them, learning lessons and discussions, was about the Workforce Investment Act that is currently going through the Senate. We had the Senior Director of Infectious Diseases come to talk to us about the things that they are always concerned about that hit our cities and towns, and they're kind of talking about getting, having people update their inoculations as adults. And we had a discussion about the Affordable Care Act. And then another one that also kind of hits home to Goodyear is the military women that have come back to their communities actually are having a harder time readjusting and finding a job than regular women finding a job. And so bringing that situation to light was very interesting. And as, Wally, as you stated, you know, it is really quite amazing sometimes, you hear all of the things that are going on in other cities, and I'm just, we are light. There are such wonderful things going on here, and just hearing from, on the Youth Education and Families, one of the council members from Chicago, sitting there with me, that's talking about having to close down 50 schools, 50 schools within their, within their city, because I believe they've lost like 250,000 people. I mean, to deal with some kind of situations like those is just tremendous, tremendous. So you always, you always learn a great deal, and I appreciate being able to attend these.
Cheryl Lynn, did you hear?
Well, I, as you know, I'm kind of new to this, and I listen, and I remember now, I truly enjoyed the National Day, the Fourth of July celebration at Skyway Church. It was really, it was gratifying, because they truly sincerely are proud of their leaders in the city of Goodyear, and pray for us to continue what we are doing. And you can never have enough of that, hint, hint. And I also want to say, I know Banner is Australia, Banner is not here tonight necessarily, but Banner has put a great medical clinic out in, at the Australia Mountain Ranch, and I think that is a really step forward for the citizens of the, that reside in Australia Mountain Ranch. I did ask them if I was put in one of the pediatric rooms. Was that a judgment of me and my personality and character? And they assured me it was just as an available room, so I'm going to hold them to that. Thank you.
You get to choose which teddy bear you want.
And the stars, and the moons, and the...
Yeah, I agree with you on the Banner Health Center. It was an element that was needed up in the Australia community, and it's, it's going to be open most through, I think Sunday is the only day that it isn't going to be open. The other thing is, it's really what I consider central care. They're going to be able to go from there, from their care, their physician there, onto Banner Health Center, Medical Center. So all of their care is continuous. So, you know, it isn't just like dropping into the doctor, they're going to be able to go to specialists, and they're going to be, you know, referred and all, they're going to make it easier for you. So I just think it's wonderful for the community, and as I stated in my talk, that's a community of all ages. That's just not one age. And so there's lots of needs up there, and they, along with a lot of people, and of course, somebody from up there, started healthy, a healthy living style, if you know, through Arizona in Action, and so they all live that, and so I think this is going to help them continue that healthy lifestyle. And so I look forward to hearing the positive comments about this. Okay, so what we're going to do is turn it over to you, city manager. Do you have any comments? And let us know follow-ups?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. I have three updates. One is, and I know we're all well aware of it, just want to revel in our celebration on the Luke Air Force Base announcement for the F-35. Lot of hard work on the part of council, but the, some of the specifics, as Department of Defense did announce that, we're going to receive three additional squadrons for the new F-35A Lightning II fighter jet. And that will be more assigned to Glendale than anywhere else in the world. So it's right next door to us, and we know it's over a billion dollars in economic impact to this region annually. But what it also does is it paves a way for a total of six squadrons, totaling 144 of the new Joint Strike Fighter, once it fully transitions over. So that is very exciting, as that happens over the next several years. The announcement actually came about a year earlier than we expected, so while we weren't necessarily totally surprised, because there was a lot of hard work, it was great to just get that confirmation. They'll actually, the squadrons start popping out here next, next year. But one of the things I think is very important, and you talk about working together, is Luke Forward Campaign, the most unique approach to supporting military operations in this country, and it was developed by many West Valley partners that were part of this collaboration in conjunction with Fighter Country Partnership, really to generate an awareness and support. I don't have the numbers of how many thousands of people supported this, but it went a long way. But I can tell you, on some of our West Valley partners, it was Avondale, Buckeye, El Mirage, Hila Ben, Glendale, Goodyear, Litchfield Park, Peoria, Phoenix Surprise, Tolleson, Wickenberg and Youngtown, as well as the county, so just showed a unified front. And I would also say that one of the things that council did some years ago, it was policy direction to maintain the southern departure corridor that allowed this to happen. If we did not plan our land uses that way to protect that departure, this would, in all likelihood, not have happened. So thank you to the members of council. The other is Coffee with the Cop. That actually kicked off on June 27th, so they held their first Coffee with the Cop, had about 20, 25 people show up over an hour and a half period. Kind of informal, but just to find out, get feedback from the citizens on how the police department's doing, answer questions, and it really reinforces what we're trying to do, is reach out to the community on our community policing approach. So a lot of thanks to officers Eric Webster, Eric Whittington, Lieutenant Kim Selaya, and then obviously Chief Guyer, who's not here tonight, but all part of this, and the outreach that they had. Last week, and I'll just be real brief on this, last week I went through a little more detail on the Star Spangled Fourth Event, that's this Thursday from 6:00 to 10:00, but it's our eighth annual. And for those that are so inclined, we will have an opportunity to break a Guinness World Record with fake mustaches. And what's the record we have to beat? Nathan, do you know what the number is off top of your head?
It's 1,800.
So if we get more than 1,800 people wearing the fake mustaches out there, we will pick up a lot of notoriety. And actually, this has been picked up by the Associated Press and the media, and it's really kind of caught on us.
We need to have Pebble Creek put it online, and we need to have Australia put it online. So your HOAs, get that out and get people there.
Yep, but that's at 7:35 this Thursday, and the photo will take place between 8:00 and 8:15, so if you want to be part of that. Obviously, there's a...
Oh, but we're going to give the mustaches, right?
Oh, yes. Show up, and we'll give you the mustaches.
We'll have a sticky for you.
It's not BYOM. So it's, we will provide the mustaches. And really hope that everyone comes and joins that celebration. Fireworks, obviously musical entertainment, a lot of things for the children as well. So that's all the information updates. There is potential follow-up, is some of the comments for consideration on where we conduct meetings. Do we go out to Australia? We'll certainly look at that and work with the council on logistics and how that might work out. But certainly, that's something that we'll be talking about soon.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anything for the city manager?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, could we get an update on the mall in August, please?
Uh, Mayor, council member, this is something that we will provide an update in August to the extent that we can.
Okay, thank you.
We're still optimistic that that's going forward, that we'll actually have plans coming to us this fall. So I think August, we'll be close to knowing where that stands, but yes, we can provide that update.
Okay.
We certainly won't keep you surprised on it.
Okay, no, that's fine. I've just had folks that are calling and asking and sending emails, and they'd just like an update.
I can imagine.
And I just keep saying, stay tuned. My second request to you is I would like to know what the perimeters are to put a crosswalk marking on a street. What has to occur for that to happen? If you will have someone get back to me and let me know. I have a proposal, if in fact we meet that, but I need to know, what do we have to do to put that proposal forward? Okay?
We could provide what the guidelines are for crosswalks.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yes, Councilman Loretano?
I just had a question, Brian. I'm sure it's all covered, just so the public can know. I assume we're going to have cooling stations or someplace for the Fourth of July, because the heat is just, I assume it's not going to break by then?
We actually have posted on our website, I know we're trying to get the information out as far as where the water stations are. I do know that that's out there right now.
No, I meant at the ballpark for the Fourth of July.
The ballpark itself?
Yeah, are we going to have an area open that's cool like we did last year?
Nathan, can you just come up and just give a quick little...
Because I've had a couple people are concerned about going, because it's outdoors.
Mayor, it's actually not on the agenda.
Oh, I'll tell you what, you know, government can really work against you. I'm sorry, but it really does.
I'm sorry? I just want to know if we're going to have a place in the ballpark, because a couple people have asked me questions who have small children, because it's outside, and even at 7:00, it's still 110 degrees. If there's going to be, like, I think one year they had a cooling station open in that one area, if that's going to be open this year?
Wait a minute, can you do it?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said I couldn't do that. Uh, what? Oh.
I just don't want people to be afraid to come in.
Mayor, Councilmember Loretano, yes, we do have a cool zone available for those patrons wishing to cool off. That will be located inside the team shop, and it will be the coolest place on campus, guaranteed.
That's what it was. We had that empty last year.
We do have tables in there as well.
And will we have water in there?
Water is available for purchase throughout the facility.
That's right.
As well as guests may bring their own sealed water bottle.
Okay, and we do, of course, have EMS there and everything, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, is that all the inquiries? All right, the next meeting will be 7:00, 8:13 at 5:00. That's still, that's still this month. And our regular meeting at 6:00, and then announces to all of you, the council's going on vacation on the night until August 18th. So what we're going to do now is adjourn this meeting, we're going to go back to the work session, but we're going to stay right up here, so, yeah, so that we won't have to move all of the gear down below. And, all right, 10 minutes, is that what you need? So 7:10 or 7:12, around in there? Is that good?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned.